Pick up a bit, which we would hope if we're permitted to keep doing this. Brad and I are standing by to continue working in this manner. Um, here on the site unless the town tells us we can't um.
Have you announced anything Rachel? I have, cause I haven't seen any announcements from the library about the service.
We posted it to the library department page on the town website, also on Facebook and also on our website.
Is there, I mean, I get to see it because I don't usually proactively go to those sites.
Right.
So can you send out email?
Um.
To to, you mean to all the, like a blanket email to ex- everybody in the database?
Yeah.
Um, that's what do you, are we permitted to do that? Like I, I'm not actually sure. Well, here's the thing, everyone who is our user, they already know to look, I suppose, but you raise a good point. We could still hit all of our users, but I think that we.
You'd have to have a lot of um, security that would make it impossible. For anybody to see the list because personal information.
Right.
For library users is um, you know, not something you want.
Yes.
Against everything.
The first step, first step to be to generate a report out of CW Mars. That Brad and I have been practicing and we've gotten okay at it, but we, we never do it often enough and it's not intuitive. But we'll, we'll make CW Mars generate a report that would have emails and names. And then from there I, I can cut and paste, but it's gonna be a one by one thing.
Well, the alternative is ask the town to send it out. Didn't, weren't there people who registered on the town website who said they wanted notices from the town? So maybe on behalf of you, the town could send it out.
Yes, um, that's what I was starting to, to say before talking about getting all of our users. The t- anyone who's lives in the town can subscribe on the town website to receive our announcement. So there's also an announcement besides what is just passively posted on our department page.
So people who've opted in, I think that's reasonable. They, they know they're gonna be part of the.
Yes, they have to, right, they have to opt in and you'll might, you might recall, Beth, maybe you hadn't come on board yet. That the town explained to us that they would not email everyone in the town on our behalf. Because that would get into privacy issues.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So.
I, I, I mean personally, I think um, if there are people who have asked for notices, those people should get them. And um, you know, might get, get one. I know I'm getting them. I'm sure we're all getting them from a lot of different places.
Yes.
And you know, beyond that, I would say that there's some responsibility on the other side. If it were me and I was gonna try to use the library and given everything else that's going on, I mean, anything I would try to do, I would. Um, go look. Yeah, go, go and look. So I think there is some responsibility on the other side. Have, have uh, asked for no- notices such as this, then. There's no harm in giving them a notice, I don't think. I don't know whatever.
If you're Rachel, you're putting a, a sign up, I presume, whether or not you've done, you're putting a sign up on the door?
We do have a sign and it includes just, um, tries to be as brief as possible to. Um, apologize and include our phone number and our email. And um, if someone is standing there with their cell, they can call me and I'll walk through how this is gonna work.
On the phone?
Right, because the full details of this, this process. Are who requested for items, uh, followed up by call them and notifying them to come pick up. And I explained that they would um, disinfect the items that I put out there as they see fit after they take them.
And what about when they return them?
That's up to us to disinfect, so um, Brad and I will go to a method of. Emptying the drop box every couple of days, so probably just twice in a week, so there'll be quite a few things there. And we will scan the items in with as little contact as possible and then. Place them in the bins or on the book cart. The bins aren't going anywhere back to delivery, but.
But, but the books that you're touching that are returned have plastic covers on them.
Right, but we.
So I don't know, I know that plastic is one of the materials that the virus lives on, I don't know exactly how long, but.
That is right at the heart of what libraries are fighting about very heatedly all this week. And in fact, um, Brad, even since we talked two hours ago. The Mass Board of Library Commissioners came out with their message saying, we don't approve of curbside delivery.
And that's the reason.
Do you have gloves, Rachel?
Uh, there are only two pairs in the kitchen and. We do have lots of hand sanitizer, so our approach has been. Either leave the book sitting in the cart for a few days. Some libraries are doing that.
Not a bad idea.
I have no idea what, how that works regarding books crowded together in a stack. Is the virus gone even in a stack?
And you're to carry them to the cart and put them on the cart. You're wearing gloves when you do that? I mean, I'm a little concerned about you guys.
Thank you very much. I, I, this is what librarians are saying to each other too. Um, for now, we're, we're. As I'm talking about it, I'm faltering, but I wanna say that we're comfortable keeping our hands down, touching a minimum of things. You know, you have a, a method, right? Anyone who's had school kids. And raised them knows about keeping your hands off, like use just one hand when your hand only contaminates. And then fully wash your hand after that.
And happy birthday while you do it.
Yeah, or even um, ABC song. Or even a prayer.
So Rachel, when, when I as a user request a book sort of in a normal way.
Yes.
Uh, am I going to get a message back in a normal way that the book is at the library?
Yes, because when we check the book in, it will pop up as on the whole shelf. But we are taking the time to also phone you and say, we're open until six today and you can come in and pick up.
Got it, got it. Well, do you have concerns, questions?
If we had an unlimited supply of gloves while we were here and should we get them? A, from where? B, if the governor or the Mass Board of Library Commissioners shuts down. Everybody, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners is not a fully governing body, would have to take the governor to shut us, I think. But until then, should we buy gloves and then not?
No, I mean, uh, I would say no, only because, well, I don't know which gloves work and which don't, but. Any of them that work should go in the hospital.
Yeah, can I, uh, just to jump in, I, I suspect that. The governor will issue a stay home order in the very near future. Having looked at Illinois, New York, California, Michigan, I can't imagine that, that it's not coming. Uh, one of the things, one of the things we did at school committee on Wednesday. Was um, we passed two, two. Uh, motions giving the superintendent the authority to continue, one, to continue to pay. Uh, all staff through shutdown, whether or not there's work being done or not. Um, that was one, and then also another motion to continue to pay. Our ven- our biggest vendor, which is of course the bus company, uh, at least through April eighth. That was a proactive step to make sure that, you know, cause you know. Really, when it comes down to it, if we have to close the library, we wanna make sure that our three staff members. Are, are safe and secure and being paid. So I would suggest that we, I don't know if we have that authority, I mean, we have the authority.
We have the money.
We do the contract, right? We, we're the ones who con- who write the contract. Are we the paymaster as well?
So wherever along the chain this takes place, the MBLC has in, in fact addressed that also. And recommended that library staff, including part-time, be paid.
Yes.
Right, well, this is, the town pays the staff.
Yeah.
So, uh, we would have to. Do you submit hours? Do you actually submit hours every week?
I do, and I have done so for this week, um, and. Again, on the library discussions, there's been a. Many, one librarian, many others have said, um, come up with different things. One of them was, uh. Since staff are paid by a annual budget contract. The pay is there to be used throughout the year between now and July. So whether you have to proactively make a statement to the town, I would leave that up to you. You could wait until it becomes a problem for us and then go to bat for us, or you could empty it. Or you could just proceed.
Right, uh, yeah, the money's there, the money's been allocated by the town, there's no reason they shouldn't continue to pay it.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. If I did take it up, you think that would be with the treasurer?
No, I would go straight to Marie as the coordinator for the select board.
Okay. Uh, we might wait to see if there's any word.
I, I think being proactive is the best way to go, frankly.
Do you?
Yeah, I mean, I just, we just shut down, just this afternoon, I participated in, in a total shutdown. All of the National Archives facilities, including our building up north. Everyone's closed, employees home, everyone's on a hundred percent telework. It's, it's common. I, I wouldn't trust the town to.
Right, right. I could feel that you need to do the gloves or not do it.
Okay.
I, I bring my. Buy one, you're allowed to buy one of each thing, like one Clorox box. So I don't know if there were gloves for sale.
And I don't know which gloves, Jane, do you know which gloves or?
Yeah, yeah, like Nitrile gloves or they say.
Do they have to be latex or do they?
No, they can be Nitrile, latex.
I.
They say they're lost, yeah.
I would, I would argue that this is gonna be so short, I mean, the, that the shutdown's gonna be coming right around the bend. This is just a moot question, as far as I'm concerned. Just shut it all down.
The being a pay part is not a moot question.
Right, the pay is the important thing. The, the books, hey, we all, we're all making sacrifices at this point, so.
Yeah. I suspect that, I mean, I am in agreement that a full closure for all of us is coming.
It's coming.
Oh.
Probably by Sunday.
Why not face it, yeah.
But let me also say, I mean, we are very well situated to promote a lot of great digital resources.
Yes.
And the, the three of us will be doing at home. As you know, our telephone system in the building is archaic, so. I do not at this moment know whether I can get the messages remotely.
You know, I did talk to Marie about that and it did not have good results. Uh, she said the town had no money, there wasn't any direct line to the library coming.
Yeah.
And I pressed to find out, well, how much would that cost? And Marie would not go there. She did not wanna even find out. But I, I'm just gonna drop it for a while, cause I think everybody's really stressed.
Yeah.
But I will bring it back up. I think we should know what it would cost to get a direct line for the library. Cause I think it would be huge for pages and great for the staff. Um, so we need to continue to think about that. I, I will raise the issue again. Cause I think, yeah, I think for you to all, yeah, it would be great. So what are you thinking, Rachel, that you would announce your cell phones and people would call for help with digital resources?
Uh, we really rolled back from that idea. It was just a very fleeting thought. Because I don't really want people to call me.
I think, I, I think using the Facebook page more aggressively. Um, because you have, you know, using the Facebook page, you can, there's a lot of things you can do with that, even going live. I mean, through the Facebook page.
Yeah, we could message, message, do messaging through the Facebook page.
Yeah.
Yes, indeed.
But my question is still the same. How are people gonna know about that?
About Facebook?
About, yes, yes.
You would also use.
It would never occur to me, hating Facebook as I do, it would never occur to me to go to Facebook for this purpose. Unless I knew about it and then I would.
Well, presumably that's what.
And not everybody's on Facebook.
Right, right.
And so with.
You could also use, you could also use this channel as well. I mean, this is, you know, you're, the library is on Gmail. So there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of stuff in, that, that Google has sitting out there for free and you can hate Google too, I mean, you know, but.
Right, again, people have to know.
It's, it's the stuff that's there. Right, and that's why, so.
They have to know that these things.
Right, so you go through, you go through the newspaper, you go through WBS, WSBS, you, I mean, you do the stuff that we should be doing anyway.
Yes. So maybe that is.
And now we have more time because we're not processing books.
That may be a better place for the staff to put its energy within publicizing.
No, the end. The end is, um, yes.
I'm talking that it may be a better place for the staff to put its energy. Uh, in publicizing what you do have, have available and how you can help people. Than in setting up the vestibule imagining when it's clear that that's gonna have commercial on it.
Okay. Um, yeah, it's a shame because I think people would start to realize it. They just need a little more time, but I do think there's a generational divide. Because one of the people who right away took a book out today. Is a young guy who lives in Richmond and he was borrowing a classic. So he looked it right up, he knew how to do that, he sent us an email. And then he came in, I mean, I've seen him in here before, I know him, but he immediately used us. But that's one sole guy in his twenties. We have almost none of them. They are the ones who automatically check online. So that is what we will make priority one, Jane, thank you.
Where did he, when he checked online, where did he look?
I didn't ask him, I mean, the, what I mean is, he looked to see. He, he somehow on his own became aware that we were putting books outside. And so he sent us an email, um, the subject line was remote book grab. And so I pulled the book off the shelf the next day and, uh. Then he duly came right in and got it and we didn't even have to talk, we just waited.
Right, I mean, I'm not saying not to do it. I'm just saying, I agree with Andy, it's imminent.
Yeah.
So I don't think for you to spend lots of time setting it up and make it run smoothly, only to have to shut it down.
Right, uh, I may still come with gloves and empty the book drop on intervals. Because we're not able to lock it shut from people dropping things off.
Yeah.
Hence it can't become overflow.
Are you officially closed now? People want to close the library?
Yes, all this week we have been. Also, I have one more important thing to tell you, but Beth, I didn't want to cut you off.
No, that's okay.
Uh, Vicky communicated with me today via text that. She wanted to offer Brad her hours during this time. Because she absolutely wants a shelter at home. And she will continue to volunteer during this time. I thought it was very generous and accepted her offer. Um, I wanted to make sure that was okay with you guys.
So she, she doesn't wanna come in for a while, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but she also, like, even then. I was offering to her to collect her pay for her hours. But she desired to award Brad her eight hours weekly as of next week. To draw that eight hours of pay.
Do you think that's great? I mean, I can understand why Vicky doesn't wanna come in.
Yeah, I have no objection to that. I think it's a great idea.
That's fine.
Thanks.
So basically, Vicky is not gonna be working her hours and Brad will be working with Vicky's hours.
But of course, in the same email, Vicky text followed by email. Vicky, um, invited patrons to take her home phone and call her, but I'm not gonna do that.
No.
I know, I'm not gonna do that. So she's going stir crazy at home, but I did. I did give her some assignments, you know, I put them in a new folder, so Brad and I can grab them out of that folder and. Put them on the website on town site in regular blasts.
Okay. So what do you think your plan for the next couple of weeks is?
Well, I think right now we can decide whether you want to. I, I'll abide by you guys' decision about whether to stop curbside delivery.
When you say curbside delivery, you mean the vestibule?
Yeah, I, I'm just calling it curbside, but vestibule delivery, excuse me.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what Barrington's calling it too. They're, they're still doing it as of, as of today. But like I say, I, I, I wouldn't be surprised if it's, you know. With New York going on Sunday, I can't imagine that Baker would. I mean, that's, that's Pennsylvania, Connecticut, New York. How could he, how could he stay out of it?
Yeah, I think it'd be great to do it as long as you can do it, with the big caveat. That you have to feel safe and do the things to keep you safe.
I, I'm checking in continually with Brad now that it's down to himself and me. And the two of us will not overlap in any way.
The other question that, the other question that Rachel and I talked about earlier was reducing our number of hours as well.
You mean the vestibule hours?
Well, the hours that we're at the library, so, I mean, we're not gonna leave the vestibule open if we're not there.
Oh, right, right, right. Well, how, how do you, you wanna do that? How do you feel about that?
Yeah, um, I, I took a look at the Nahant Library website. Um, which was, you know, one of the brave few libraries that weighed in about this, keep on getting books to people. Um, and they have designated days, especially since they're driving around. So they have designated days, it's not every day. So even though the librarian and her staff of two are reporting to work. They're not delivering those, you know, every single hour that they're open. So yes, I think for us, given little use, it, it could be fine for. And given the fact that weekdays and workdays are gonna blur right now. I think it would be fine for us to chop off Saturday, for example.
Rachel, what, what, what is your circulation? Do you have an idea of what your circulation has been like over the last, you know, since. You instituted the vestibule pickups?
Under ten, I would say.
Under ten a day?
Yeah, very, very little.
Around ten a day, maybe?
Oh, no.
Less?
Total, ten total.
But I just, I don't feel it's really been announced. As I say, if you proactively go to find out. You will find out, but I haven't seen anything in the Yoko or the Edge. So I think, if I hadn't talked to you, I wouldn't have known about this.
So as you know, the Yoko doesn't come out till the first of the month, so. Um, it, that is reflected in our April Yoko entry. Uh, along with a whole bunch of, you know, it's an emergency entry with a lot of instructions for people. So that's gonna hit our older population of users, you know, primarily us and older. And um, maybe they'll. Joyfully embrace our small collection, as I hope they will. But I don't know, and I, I'm hearing you and this will be our priority, Brad and me. To prepare a couple of statements and call the radio station, call the Edge. I don't know what their staffing is at the Edge, but I'm sure they're, they're still of some degree of approval.
Oh, yeah, they're, you know, they're a little working remote, and the radio's great.
Yeah.
Well, the Edge did, the Edge did put out a, uh, an email urgently requesting people to donate money. Because they've lost a big chunk of their advertising base, so.
Oh, because of this, yeah. Um, I, I, I mean, in terms of reducing your hours, you know, reducing your hours means reducing your pay, right? So I, I mean, like.
Uh, except, what I would say is, we would be working from home and in hopes of continuing to be paid. As the Mass Board of Library Commissioners has suggested.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's basically, there's plenty of, there's plenty of library tasks that can be taken care of. Remotely in the cyberspace and at home, so, yeah, no, no one's gonna be losing any, no one's gonna be losing any pay over this.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, I, 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 I leave it to you all to, to, to decide if that's what's gonna work best.
Yeah.
It is mandatory.
How about if we went on into the early part of April and see if Yoko gives us a spike?
Or, or if Baker shuts, shuts us down.
Yeah.
Yeah, what happens first? Well, that only gives you another week, right, or ten days, so that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you wanna call out anything else in your library report that's important?
Uh, let me just look on, on screen here. Uh, February statistics were good, but. By the last week of February, the school visits were over with for Vicky. And there was February vacation, so school visits were a little bit lower. But, um, we also had a decent number, let's see. No, that was it. Um, that was all I wanted to tell you today.
Alright, we should approve the minutes. What I cannot remember is if we are missing some minutes.
No, there's two, I uploaded two to the invitation, so you should have both, both January and February.
Oh, you did, okay.
They're both, they're both sitting there, you can take them, you can edit them, you can download them, you can do whatever you want with them.
We don't need to read them through to approve them, right? We can just approve them.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
No, agree, yeah, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, a second.
Rachel, what have we been doing with the, so past? What have we been doing with the?
We have to finish that motion. All in favor, aye.
Vote, yeah, aye.
Aye.
There we go.
So approved, thank you, Andy.
Sure.
What have we been doing with the approved minutes? Has someone been sending them to Marie?
Yeah, so far they've made their way to Marie and I will do so with these two.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I'll be right back.
Yeah, mine's in my lap.
I thought I.
How do you say? Oh, that's funny.
Let's see if I can do it.
How's, Andy, how's life with, uh, the Young Adults Home?
Oh, fine, yeah, we're, it's. Yeah, we're, it's, it's life, it's all life.
So, I'm kind of exhausted from the psychic strain of all this. The only other thing on the agenda, other than setting the next virtual meeting, was reviewing the decision-making path for funds management. So, we have identified two attorneys we can talk to, we haven't yet. Just to talk about, again, what is involved in, uh, setting up officially uh, a path to manage the funds essentially the way we've been managing them unofficially. To Beth, anybody wanna say anything about?
I, um, I was looking into, I I started out I can scan copies for you guys if you want this, or maybe, Andy, you may already be familiar, but, um, so I, uh I read, uh, the bylaws, you know, the West South Bridge Board of Trustees bylaws. Last updated in twenty seventeen, and we're supposed to be updating when we're here. And, um, so according to the bylaws, um, they, uh you know, I don't wanna read these, it's kind of boring, but, um, they, what they do is, they say that, um, the that we will, um, adhere to, uh, chapter seventy-eight of the Mass General Laws, section eleven. And I can, I I think I should just scan maybe and email this stuff to you if you guys wanna have a look at it, but because it what what, uh, section eleven says is that, um, we are in charge of the custody, ma- maintenance, support and management of, um, any gifts or requests, um, to the library. And that we're supposed to, um, and that go through the town, and the town is supposed to, um uh, release the funds. This implies that we can spend the money, and then it says that once a year, we have to account for what we've spent. That's according to our bylaws backed up by, uh, because there was a problem uh, in April and May, where, um, the, we, there was a deposit of five hundred dollars um, to our account, uh, and then the next month when I looked at the statement, and Yale looked at the statement with me, um, that five hundred dollars came out. So we didn't know. So the five hundred dollars that went in was a mistake from a different ten, it had gone to a different town account. Let me finish, um, and, uh, so they, so the money got deposited in our account, and then without even notifying us they just took the money out the next month. So if you look, so if you look at the statement, there's five hundred dollars, who knows where that came from, and then there's five hundred dollars missing, and who knows where it went? So, um, uh, you know, that, that led me really to think that, uh, setting up a foundation is probably easier, uh, I mean, a better way to go, just to separate completely. I don't think we can do it without the town's permission, but.
According to the treasure, the town is eager to give us permission. But why don't we make the next step, Beth, you and I talk to these two attorneys, or I know that, we'll we'll talk offline about that, I think we just, we need to have.
You wanna put on the record what their names are?
Uh, yes, one is Mitch Greenwald. And the other one is Lucy Prashker, who works for the Berkshire Tocana Foundation. I thought she'd be interested.
Lucy's really, Lucy's really sharp.
Yeah.
Also busy, she just, uh, took over his chair. She just took over as chair of the, uh, uh, what is it, the Eight Towns, uh, School Consolidation Committee.
Interesting, so she may or may not have time. But it's work at the least of pulling me out of conversation, so that may be what I can organize there. Do you wanna do this again on either Zoom or Google Chats, do you like this?
It seems like it's the way to go, I gotta record, I should have a recording too, so.
Yeah, how would you record it, Andy?
Uh, the Macintosh operating system, Shift, Command five, you can record anything on your screen.
Shift what five?
Shift, Command five.
Command five, wow, that's good to know.
You can take a snapshot, you can record live video.
What do you, what do you get, what's the result, so after this meeting?
I'll have a little, I will have a little M, I should have a little M four A file, that I can I can edit and send off, send along, and we can post that, in place of minutes, or I can just do some minutes off of it.
That's very cool. Oh, I guess you can.
I don't like Zoom myself, but, uh, I mean, at least the free version. The free version does, is missing a lot of stuff that the paid version has.
Like what?
Recording. Uh, is not, you can't record a session, just not a big. I I suppose I could, I just, this is, this is connected to a calendar, this is connect, you know, everybody has Gmail here, pretty much, I think.
That's true.
So, and everybody now, now you could, you can import this calendar into your own, your own Gmail calendar. I have them all stacked up now, so that I have the school committee and the library.
I had a Zoom call yesterday with a group of six people. And the, the, um, transmissions seemed to be better, there weren't all these stops and starts. Are you all getting a lot of stops and starts?
It's really dependent on the, uh, on the bandwidth of the participants. Your your bandwidth has been fine, I think mine's been pretty good, but we're living, we live in a, we live in a world that doesn't have really great bandwidth. You notice, you notice the town, the town has fiber, so Rachel's been just sharp and clear all the way through.
Alright, so when do you all next wanna meet like this? We could do this by phone, but it feels really great to be able to see you all, do you agree?
Yeah, no, it's fun.
Y'all have nice houses.
Uh, you know, I I had no idea, could I have any idea tomorrow or the day after the day after, I know that I um, all my Brooklyn family is coming to hunker down at my house.
Really?
So, yeah, my house is well set up for everybody getting a a little part of the house of their own, um, so I, for as long as it takes, I'm gonna have an extra, uh, s- six people. So it'll be a little crazy here, but I.
So both are kids and their families?
Yeah, they live in New York. Brown zero.
I know, my daughter's in Manhattan, she and her husband are hunkered down in their little apartment near Lincoln Center, and they don't wanna leave. And they don't think it's safe for us for them to come here.
No, they don't think it's safe either, and I told them, then get here soon, because it'll get less and less safe, so. Well, I have a pregnant daughter.
Do you say we're gonna do this in a month, and then call a meeting sooner if we have to, or you wanna go to three weeks?
No, that sounds good, next, a month from now, and then.
I think so.
Alright, if we have to.
Okay, so a month from now is, um, I I I'm looking at my calendar. So today is the twenty, and that would be the twenty-seventh, the third.
Seventeenth, April seventeenth, is that it?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Alright, Friday, April seventeenth, five P M.
Great, sounds good.
You wanna send that out to anybody, Andy? You wanna send that out to anybody?
Yeah, I'll I'll drop it into the calendar.
Thank you all, Rachel and Brad, don't hesitate to call if something comes up, I'm sure something's gonna come up.
Can can, can Rachel, can you just go over what your understanding is now, just so I know we're all on the same page?
Yeah, understa- standing of what in particular?
Or whatever it looks like, assuming the whole state can get closed down.
I think we can give it a slightly longer chance for vestibule pickup to take hold. If we can get better at getting the word out. Uh, if people from other towns who are younger there, but also when the um, senior population of this town sees our yokel entry, maybe we'll have an uptick. Maybe by then, they'll be maxed out on home resources. Um, so I'd like to wait for a couple of weeks, and then have a plan for promoting digital, the wealth of digital resources from home during our work hours, so each of us, in this case Brad and me, and Vicky as a volunteer, just to add on to it, will post and promote.
And are you gonna shorten the hours? That you're available, or that the public can come in the vestibule and pick up books?
I I don't, I'm not sure we concluded that part of our conversation here, I'm in favor of it, because for sure, usage of any, you know, of this service, and if we can continue, it will be down.
Maybe you should do it.
You should do it, that's a management call, that, trustees don't need that.
Right.
I would just communicate widely and well, and then. I mean, and I would say, when you do communicate it, I would say for the next two months, I wouldn't mess around with weeks, cause it's not gonna be with the system. You might as well stay for the next two months, given the conditions.
Okay, the regional library system has made, um, all items due May first, so I'll make sure people know that too.
I'll try to get everything read by then.
It's interesting they did that, cause that makes more work and more sanitizing and all that.
Well, you know, it's it's a good thing I got caught with like almost thirty books in like in stock, so.
Yeah, everything's.
Clarify this for me, please, are there still, are libraries still sending books to each other or no?
Nope.
Was suspended on Monday statewide, so what's, what we've got here is what you got.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Bummer, okay.
I'm catching up, it's great.
Alright, yes, stay well.
Thank you, take care, everyone. Move adjourn, I move adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.